You're live or did you?
Oh, you think it's up there? I thought it read the bottom.
I don't see anything.
Yeah. People saw that.
We was on the technology committee consultant.
Okay, we are live. So I will call the meeting to order. And Maria, I don't know if you need us to call out who's here for you.
I think, yeah, go ahead. Just, I just want to make sure I have all the names. So go ahead and call them out.
Patty?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes. Uh huh.
Mary Lynn?
Yes.
So Cheryl?
Okay, yep.
And Jean?
Uh huh, I have it. Can you hear me? Yep, I have it.
Yes, thank you.
Uh huh.
And so can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Uh, so moved.
And I'll second, I guess.
Um, do you need a second? No, she said she. So in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um. And we nominated and voted in our new officers last month, so I don't. And just to, and then we were sworn in just a little while ago. So the president is Cheryl Sandifer. The vice president is Maria Blachamuy. The treasurer is Manoj Shankar. And the secretary is Carolyn Lynch.
Okay. Got it.
This is Avic. Manoj, you want to give the treasurer's report?
Oh, we just, oh, we skipped them. Okay, I was taking them all off.
Oh, I'm sorry. And we can go ahead and do the approval of the minutes from last month's minutes. Okay.
I move that we approved the minutes of the June meeting.
I have a question. How did those, how does that work? Are we supposed to be on two committees or?
We usually, everybody chooses to. I mean, there's not a limit.
Sure. So the minutes approved?
Was there a second?
Oh, ask Mary Lynn's second.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Manoj, just to clarify, usually we only have two voting number. Um, per committee.
Okay.
Because if we have three, then we have a quorum and usually.
That's right, okay. So, yeah, I think I already signed up with two, the budget and the technology. I think that's why I signed up.
Policy personnel.
Oh, that's, yeah, but I noticed Maria was on the technology one, okay.
And just later, I signed up for technology because I thought you would go beyond personnel.
I did.
So that's why I did technology. I figured it's a problem too.
No?
No, yeah, Maria, yeah.
But he didn't take.
I didn't take.
Oh, okay. I did technology. I'm sorry. Tell all.
So then I'll be to start the treasurer's report. How's that?
Yes.
Actually, before we start, I'd like to thank Valerie. She's been really patient to me. And of course, Bob has been patient with me and, because I took his time to understand it. And Valerie has actually been giving me a lot of the old reports from 2016 onwards. So I can present how the library operated before and now. And this is an important month because the fiscal year is finished. So if you look at the first page that they sent out, the monthly report. The way I'm going to address the report is what interests me really. Each of us is very different, so I'm going to just talk about the big picture, I think, say. You know, we have basically three accounts, the operating account, the savings account, and everything else. The savings account, so operating account, sorry, started with $246,000 approximately at the beginning of the month. It ended the fiscal year with $262,000. And in the middle, there were, of course, checks written. And it was inflated by about $175,000 from transfer from the savings account. As a deposit to the operating account to cover the checks. The second account is the savings account. And it started with a balance of 1.9 million, finished with 1.73 million. And that's because we took $175,000 from there and put it into the operating account. The rest actually hasn't changed from last month. I mean, I'm not sure how often it changes at all, actually. But I looked at the last three months, it hasn't changed. So I'm going to leave that alone. And so the total fund balance is about $2.1 million. That's at the end of the fiscal year. Now, I gave you a graph of, this is in the big picture. And the first graph, the blue one, shows you how did we end up at the end of the fiscal year every year for the last four years. So we end up at $2.1 million. And I'll talk about the reason why, but we just, it's been going up steadily. And those of you who've been here much longer than I have have noticed that there would have been a huge bump in 2018 and before that, that's because we had all the the construction and other money coming in. I took that off because that's not, it's not a recurring thing. So this is just to compare everything at the same time, you know, end of the fiscal year, if we didn't have that extra money coming in. So this shows that it's been, the amount we have in the bank has been going steadily. And if you look at the same report, I'm going to skip the very middle because those, that just shows you what's been happening for the last few days. If you look at the box at the bottom, it says operating bank balance and book books. The key thing there is the payroll, other expenses have been taken off. And and we need to transfer the $350,000 to cover current checks. And the checks amount, and we'll go into that later, about $307,000. So there were 63 yard checks for various things. And the reason it's so high is because in July, we ended up paying subscription for annual services. So it'll cover things for the whole fiscal year. And I don't know how high it is typically, but this is exceptionally high. Every July it is, it's like that. On the next page is the revenue expenditure report. You can look at all the numbers there, but my big thing was, it's shown in the graph, which shows with the red bars. It just shows our expenditures approximately about $3 million. Which is the revenues on the top, the expenditures at the bottom. And if you look at the last three years, and of course you have skipped fiscal '20, which is the little bar that goes right to the bottom. Because we, I mean, that is exceptional there, but our expenditures have been fairly steady to, and they've been going down, actually. So if you look at the revenue categories, the ones that caught my eye are the first few, property tax. It's about $116,000 higher than we budgeted. Motor vehicle usage sap was almost $32,000 higher than we budgeted. And overall, our revenue was, you can see the numbers there. The actual revenue was 3.5 million, which is $150,000 more than we had budgeted. So revenue was higher than we expected. Expenditures actually were lower than we expected, so which is, they're both positive. I mean, higher revenue, lower expenditure is a good thing. If you look at the expenditure. Again, the notable ones are wages were about $16,000 lower than we had budgeted. And printed materials and audio visual together were about 120, oh, 121,000 lower than we expected. Third column actually has it in percentages, but I was going to give it real numbers. And overall, total expenditures were $324,000 less than we had budgeted. Actually, I'm going to ask Bob this question. Well, this, when we talk about budget, is this the budget that was made in July last year or the revised one in February or March?
I think it's revised by.
It's revised by, right?
In, in, in February.
In February, okay, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so this is not from the original July budget.
Correct.
So we, so even though we budgeted again in February, we spent much less. And now, I looked at the last one, two, three, four years, which is, and it shows that, you know, the total expenditures on average, and for four years, it's gone down by 2.2% annually on an annual basis. And again, I took off the exceptional thing that we had for construction. And which to me, I mean, the reason I looked at the last four to five years is to see how tight a ship are we running, you know? I talked to, oh, let's see, Mark, Mark Overstreet. Mark said, you know, you have to be, he said, you know, people who watch this and who examine the library, but they're always thinking that, you know, perhaps the library has too much money. And, you know, I did a five-year analysis to see, because June 30th of any year is a good time because the fiscal year is over. And for the last five years, you know, we have been, we've been running a very tight ship, actually. For example, our personnel costs have come down by 1.3% annually the last four years on average. Our operating costs have gone down annually. And our total expenditures have come down, as I said, 2.2% on an annual basis the last four. And so we've been running a really, I mean, it is very efficient.
I'm wondering this year, how COVID affected expenditures?
You're talking about 2021?
Yeah.
The one that's just finished? Yeah, well, that's why I took a five-year average, because, you know, COVID would, so it'll wipe out part of that.
Yeah. I mean, you still spend a lot of money on programs.
Programs, yeah.
Even though you think, because we weren't having programs here.
That's right.
We were hosting programs.
But if you compare it to, I just, okay, since you're talking about programs, just look at the last three years. In fiscal '18, we spent $77,000 on programs. Fiscal '19, we spent $63,000. Fiscal '20, which is out of the bad year, we spent $50,000. And fiscal '21, we spent just $32,000. So it is because of that. But even in '18 and '19, it had gone down by $15,000. I'm not sure why. Uh, that's.
Helen, I can't answer either. That was before.
Well, it could be because.
I think it's because we went from, if I'm not mistaken, that's the time that we went from having the carnival here to kick off the summer reading program, to having the pool parties. And I would, I would think that that would probably be significantly less expensive.
Yes, I think that that's probably true. I mean, that's, that's an accurate portrayal of that from what I can tell from staff.
Now, the overall operating costs have gone up on average by 7%. That's because of, actually, we can talk about this. I looked at all bills. And there are a whole bunch of things that, you know, I guess we have to pay now. Because, you know, we have to be careful about security, system security and other things. So, and all those cost money, things perhaps we didn't need five years ago, so much. I mean, people trying to enter your computer system or destroying it. So now we have to pay for that. So it's not just building security, it's data security and things.
Digital, oh, yeah.
And that.
Become more and more important, yeah.
And now, as part of the treasurer's duty, the other part is, does Jean go a part of the citizens' report? That seems like the library functions is all the treasure talk.
Uh, no, usually the treasurer does not.
No, no, okay.
Unless you want to say something.
No, 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 no. Let me just go to the treasurer part. You know, as I said, there, I think there's 69 checks, and you see the list. Some of them are huge, some of them are small. I spent an hour and a half with Valerie and, my first time, so I wanted to go through each of them to see where the money goes and what these things mean. And I, and I'm pretty satisfied. I mean, if, if there are any questions I can answer them, actually. Because I've gone through them to see what books we buy, what we do, and it's, it seems really reasonable. And I know some of the items are huge, and part of the reason is, for example, the Kecal big thing is that we do have to pay the premiums upfront for full year. I can talk about the big items, the little ones also. Let's see. The electrical solution, I was surprised, I mean, we replaced hundreds of bulbs apparently, to LED bulbs upstairs. So that's, that's the first item up there. But we can go down if you want. If you have any questions about a particular one, I probably have the answer. If I don't, Jean will have the answer. Because I want to be your eyes and ears to make sure that I've gone through everything. It seems reasonable. So do we have to formally approve? The last thing I spoke about, so is that something that you proposed as a?
You just hope he never goes into approval. I never like to make that much of a.
Oh, sure, all right.
I would be happy to make a motion to approve the treasurer's report as presented. I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Are we voting?
Yeah.
Since you finished that, I had a question. Technically, you know, once we've approved it, that's when I can sign these. We can move to the next part of the agenda.
Jean, I did want to say, I noticed on the statistics report that it does look like the circulation is picking up. I don't know so much the the library visits, but the circulation, the people who are coming must be checking out a lot.
Yes, we are, we are seeing that increase, which is really nice. And the visits, we're not where we'd like to be, but.
It's greatly improved.
Yes, it certainly has. And I, I guess I should have looked right last month, but we're seeing more people in the building. So, and that's good, but we're doing the programs outside of the building too. So once we're back in full force, I think, in September, I think we'll be able to do a better comparison of what our outreach is.
I will tell you, I worked in the bookstore Monday morning. And for the first time in a year and so many months, I heard that movement where children are running back and forth. It was wonderful.
Yes.
So I know the children are coming.
Yes, the interactives are opening up again, and that really makes a difference.
Does circulation usually go down some in the summer anyway?
It can. We sometimes see a bump in June when the summer reading program jumps out of starts. And then it might slack off, that we're not really, we're not seeing that much a lot. So, and it's, it's hard. I, circulation is important because we have the resources that we want people to use. But people are using libraries differently than they used to. It's not just the number of items that they pick out, although that's a nice number. It's coming to the library, being here, using the interactive, spending time with their children. You know, they're not checking out as many books as they did. Being here, being aware of the library, using our electronic resources, those are all things that we need to look at, at the reach that we have. And it's hard to quantify all those things. So it's a little bit of a nebulous area, but going from a place where we weren't doing much of any of that, I mean, last year for three months, we didn't do anything. We could not serve our, our community, except for the electronic resources. And to see what we're doing now, it's very heartening, you know? I think that there's a lot of room to go to get back to where we were pre-COVID. But I think we're making a lot of steps in the right direction and a lot of nice gains in.
How do you charge library visits?
We have a people counter that gets taxed the people who come in the door. So that's, that's the primary number for them.
And what about when I read a book on librarian things?
Yes, that gets tracked as well. Those are, those are recorded within the software, and then we, that's included in the report. Under audiobooks or the sort of the streaming services, electronic materials, overdrive books.
Oh, I, okay, that's okay.
Yeah.
And that's pretty, they stayed pretty stable from last summer when that's the only way people could use a library.
Yes, it's a trend that other libraries have seen too, and it falls within us that, that really picked up when that was the only thing people could access. And that usage has not fallen off. We've made some converts, and we've also, people have just added the ebooks to pay, they read both now when they only read one or the other. So I, I think that that's not likely to drop off.
Do you want to give your director's report?
Sure. You should have all had copies of that. Again, it's, it's talking about, to go in the same vein, what we're doing. We've had really nice response to our in-person programs for families. 957 people for the circus. 214 for town and obstacle courses that we offered at the parks. It's, it's really, it's really wonderful for staff to start interacting, to be interacting with their, the families that they haven't really seen so much before. The interesting thing still to me is the YouTube stats, which continue to increase. I, we don't have an explanation for it, but it's just really fascinating to watch. We're, we're increasing, you know, service in the time of COVID is, is different than it used to be, but it's the one thing that we're all in this together with. It's unfortunate, if I move into the building maintenance part, that we couldn't get some of the things that we did in the summer that we're trying to accomplish, that we couldn't get them done while we were, had fewer people in the building. But that supply chain thing just did not work out well for us. So we've completed the second floor lighting project. We'll be doing the first floor in the parking garage, hopefully by the end of the summer. And we'll be upgrading the equipment in this room, in the boardroom, and in the rear room, and that's supposed to start next week. So the rear room will be a better experience for groups, and once we can bring them back in to use it, it'll be a higher-grade video equipment and higher-grade audio, so that you'll be able to see a movie during the day. And we won't have to have those blacked out at night and then still be peering through the dust to, to see the quality. So that's going to be a very nice addition for, for folks. But we just didn't have the equipment that they could install until now because of the supply chain issues. So that will be also a really nice thing to offer for the community. And then Manoj touched on it a little bit. The last thing about, that I wanted to mention is that the things that we're having to do to protect our network and data security. We do have to pay for that, where we didn't have to do it. Our internal things were, were in place and, and very helpful. But now we're, we're paying more and have, employing a few different strategies to keep our, our data safe and our network safe. And Rob is, I want him to come and tell you more about that. If you read anything in the news about the cyber attacks and hackers, they're not just, well, they're hitting the big people first. But they're using them to infiltrate to a lot of smaller companies. And that's where libraries can be vulnerable, because we contract with someone to help keep our, our data safe. And if they're breached, then we are as well. So Rob and Josh are working. I won't say tirelessly, because they get pretty tired by the end of the day, but it's, it's an ongoing thing. It seems like there's some new threat every day. So I want Rob to fill you in on that a little bit more. But so far, what they're, what they've done, the things that they implemented even several years ago, have really stood us well to be impervious to some of those, because we have been, the attempts have been made, but they haven't gotten through to our network. So that's a testament to their ability to keep us secure.
I noticed that the media box was back open.
Yes, just this week it opened up. So I think we'll see, we'll be seeing, I've seen people come in. We did a soft open, but if people are watching now, they'll know that they can come in and use the media box again. So I think that will also help our situation.
Because I've been in three times in, in the last four days, and there's been somebody at the media box every time.
I saw someone come in today and go right straight to us. So the word has gotten a part of our, our figure, so. Do you have any questions about any of those?
I just wanted to say, you didn't include it, but you, the paperwork you sent us had two notes of thanks to the library.
Oh, yes, yes. I'm, I'm sorry about that. Yes, we had very, two very nice notes of, of thank yous for service for one of our, our staff members, Grace Wilson. And actually, the staff as a whole, when the Red Cross did their, or the, not Red Cross, the health department did the vaccination clinic here, which was very successful. So they both sent us notes of appreciation.
I also was really pleased to see Diane DeHaene is serving as the Rotary President this year.
Yes.
I think it's great.
It is. She's going to make a very, very good president. She's very active in Rotary.
Yes, that's great.
Okay, is there, I don't think we have a report from the Budget Committee, they have a minute. Building Committee? Along with.
Yep.
Policy and Personnel, we are working to finish up your performance review for the year. So that'll happen before the August meeting. And then the other thing is in the business, and we'll talk about that when we get there. So the Technology Committee, Maria, did Technology meet?
No, what I'll do is we'll meet prior to, I guess Rob is coming to the next meeting. So we'll have to meet, I would like to meet with him before then. So I'll set that up.
Okay. And they are, I don't think, I don't think they've met. Go to New Business. Bob moved to the Advisory Board, and I moved up. And Allison has resigned from the board to pursue other things and to spend more time with her family. So we have a position open on the Advisory Board. And the Policy and Personnel Committee met, and we had three very strong applicants who were interested in, in joining the board. And our recommendation is to ask Mark Overstreet to join. So I guess we need to, to make a motion and vote on that as a, as a whole board. So I'll start off and make the motion since I would, I'll chair the committee.
Who made the motion? I missed it.
Carol.
Okay, got it.
I'll second the motion. It's Mary Lynn.
Okay, got it.
Okay, we're going to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jean needs to have the paperwork for the, for the banks to switch over for Manoj to sign for the library. And we've, we've already made, made that change, so we don't really need to talk about it, do we?
I, I just wanted it recorded in the minutes that.
Okay, I got it.
He not change from Bob to Manoj.
And then Jean, I'm going to let you talk about the open records policy.
The open records policy was changed by law, and it went into effect at the end of June. So we are required to post, to have an open records policy, and it has to be posted on the website. And then we have to have a form that people can use and instructions for them to use if they want to make an open records request. So in compliance with that, I sent you copies of the open records policy. It didn't change a lot from what we had before, but it hasn't been posted on our website, and it hasn't been posted. Um, it didn't change a lot from what we had before, but it hasn't been posted on our website and it hasn't been posted um, prominently within the library. We have to do both. So, um, that's what I wanted to incorporate the new parts of the law. And then, um, and it has to do with residency. The major changes have to do with residency in the state of Kentucky. And, um, people have to say whether they are a resident and, you know, they have to specify the records that they're asking for. And that gives us some leeway whether we comply, if the record is from out of state or the request is from out of state or not. In news organizations are exempt from that. Any news organization anywhere could make a, an open records request. But, um, I just wanted to bring the policy up to date. So that's what reflected there. And the form that we have incorporates the standardized version from the Attorney General into, um, a form that other libraries have been using too. So we need their name, address, the type of records that they're asking for. Um, how they, how they want then, the cost that they would incur depending on the format that they want their records in. So that's all in, in the form. They do not have either of the forms to make their request, but they do have to include the information that would be included in the form in the, in a written request. So that's all spelled out in policy.
The one thing I noticed is on the form that you have, um, you say that the printed copies would be ten cents per black and white copy. But then in the policy, you say it's fifteen cents.
Okay, and the form needs to be corrected.
So I don't, I didn't know which one was correct, but.
The, the, the policy is correct in the form.
It's thirty-five cents on both for the colored copies, so.
Thank you.
I noticed a real tiny, uh, it's under retained records. And said, library will maintain and retains. I think it should just be singular. Very valuable.
Yes. I'll make that edit. Thank you.
We need to make a motion to approve that or?
Yes, it has to be adopted by the board.
So I'll make a motion to, um, approve the new open records request uh, policy in form with the changes mentioned.
And the change was from ten to fifteen cents or the other way around?
From, from ten to fifteen.
Fifteen cents, okay.
On the form.
On the form.
Yes, and the policy is, policy is correct. And then, uh, to take the S off of retains, um, under retained records. To correct it.
Yeah.
I'll second the motion. It's Mary Lynn.
I got it. Thank you.
I. All in favor? Aye.
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 I don't think we have any help business. Okay, all right. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Connie just joined us. I just noticed her. I wasn't paying any attention, so.
Did you let her in?
I did. So, yes.
Okay.
Maria?
I got it, I got it. Okay. So Cheryl made the motion to adjourn, right? Do we have to second that or no?
Yes, and did we get a second?
I second it, I'm sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I watched you all on YouTube. I watched it on YouTube, guys.
So sorry, I'm paying attention to this screen.
I can still hear you. I just wasn't interactive at that point.
Okay.
No problem.
Hey, was there anything you wanted to add? Uh, I have to apologize to Connie because she texted me twenty-eight minutes ago to get in.
I think I, I think I texted you all, but I did watch on you, I did text you or watch you.
Can we turn them off?
Yeah.
I am so sorry.
It's okay, we're all, we're all good.
So.
No. We're all good.